I know, I know.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the September 27, 2012 Town Council Meeting to Order. If you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Announcements. The Merrimack Town Council initiated and is overseeing the Sixth Annual Merrimack Fall Festival and Business Expo, which will be held at the Town Center this Saturday, September 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., rain or shine. And it is 50/50 at this point, so let us hope. There will be venues both inside and out, including Town Hall, Our Lady of Mercy Parking Lot, O'Garah Field, and the James Master Cola Upper Elementary School. Admission is free and is open to everyone. The next Town Council meeting is scheduled for October the 11th at 7:00 in the Town Hall Meeting Room. And the other regular Town Council meeting in October is October the 25th, also at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Meeting Room. Eileen?
The Public Library is celebrating the Eighth Annual One Book, One Town. During the month of October, the town is invited to read Nathaniel Hawthorne's The House of the Seven Gables. There are four events for adults and teens to accompany the read of the book, the reading of the book. Each event starts at 7:00 p.m. Space is limited, so registration is recommended. Friday, October 26th, is the 20th Annual Halloween Event at Wasserman Park from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Activities will include indoor games, costume judging contests, pumpkin decorating, and more. Merrimack High School First Robotics Team is returning to sponsor the haunted house. Once again, the Merrimack PD and DEA Drug Takeback Day is this Saturday, the 29th, between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. in the lobby of the police station. Please bring your unwanted, outdated, and unused prescription medication for proper disposal. The official date and time for Halloween is Wednesday, October 31st, between 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. October is National Fire Prevention Month. The Merrimack Fire Department will be holding its annual open house on Thursday, October 4th, from 4:30 to 7:30. There will be emergency equipment and live fire demonstrations during the event. Additional information can be found at the Fire Department website. Thank you.
We have recognitions this evening, and the first one is recognition of the retirement of Library Director Janet Angus. The Town Council is pleased to present a recognition plaque to Janet on her retirement effect of September 30. She's been employed by the Merrimack Public Library since September 15, 1986. Susan, would you like to come join us, please?
So we have this plaque to Janet. It's presented to Janet Angus upon the occasion of her retirement from the Merrimack Public Library in recognition of the loyal and dedicated service to the town of Merrimack, which you have contributed for more than 26 years. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the town of Merrimack. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty, and the dates are September 15, 1986, to September 30, 2012. And it's presented by the Town Council this 27th day of September 2012. Janet, congratulations.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Susan, or Janet, if you would like to say anything, if you have the microphone.
I would just like to say it has been a wonderful 26 years, and I am very looking for, very much looking forward to retirement, but it has been, it has been wonderful working at the Public Library with all the wonderful people there and the people at the town, and I just am very glad to have been a service to the community.
So I would love to just take an opportunity to publicly thank Janet Angus for 26 years. That's a long time. That was the year I graduated from high school, so that's a long time. That makes me sound young, huh? Janet is one of the most hardworking people I've ever met. If there was a task to be done, she was working hard and diligently and professionally, and she has been a great asset to this town and to the library. But as I said the other night at her, her retirement party, even above all of the professionalism and the hard work, the most important thing about Janet is that she's a kind and a thoughtful person that has really been an asset, not just to the library, but in my life personally. It's been a pleasure and an honor and a privilege to be able to work side by side with her in promoting the great programs and assets that the library gives to this town. And I want to thank her on behalf of the town and even personally from myself for the influence that she has had here. Thank you, Janet.
We have two other, two other recognitions. Jim, would you join me? The gentlemen that we're recognizing this evening are unable to be here. The one is Donald Hamel. He's retiring from the wastewater division of the Public Works Department effect of October 3rd, 2012. He's been employed by the town since January 23rd, 1989. We also be recognizing, we also are recognizing William John Adams in recognition of his retirement, again from the wastewater division, effect of September 29, 2012. He's been employed by the town of Merrimack Public Works Department since September 22nd, 1986. And so, Jim is their department head supervisor. If you would say a few words about them, it would be appreciated.
Well, first, it's going to be tough to replace two longtime employees who've done a really fantastic job for the community, for the wastewater plant. It's tough to lose them both in pretty much the same week, but John actually began his career at the highway division in 1986, and about a year later, he transferred to the wastewater plant as a plant operator, holding down the fort on second shift. But his love was always running equipment, so when we built the compost facility in 1994, he transferred out there and has been running all the equipment ever since. So we could always count on John for covering, because it's a seven-day operation, he was willing to come in and work if people were on vacation. And he just did a really fantastic job. And he always told me that he was related to John Quincy Adams, but I, he never showed me any evidence of that, so. And Don Hamel, he, he also actually started as a construction services supervisor back when there was a separate division for construction services. And when that division was consolidated, he transferred down to the wastewater plant as sewer inspector. So he's been our first and only sewer inspector in town. And again, he's done a really fantastic job. Some of the projects that we worked on recently was the Reed's Ferry Sewer and Drainage Project, and, you know, he was a great liaison with the contractors and the business owners and the residents there trying to keep everything running smoothly. He also managed the interceptor rehabilitation program. He was also pretty good with IT, so if we had little computer problems here and there, he would always help us out with that. And again, he was willing to do whatever it took to, you know, aid the community and to keep everything running smoothly.
Thank you, Jim. And if you would take these on our behalf, appreciate it. Thank you. If you're wondering why I'm clunking around with a cane and dropping it all over the place, I had knee replacement surgery on August 20th, so I'm still recuperating from that. And anyway, just, some of you know that, but many people don't, so it's not a sign of advanced dementia yet. I said, I qualified it. Although my presence here would sort of confirm it, but anyway, we'll let that go. Okay, next item is appointments. This is the annual review with the zoning board of adjustment. Phil, any members of the zoning board, if you would move up to the front here and make sure that your microphones are on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Again, Phil Street, Levin Spruze, I'm Chair of the Zoning Board. Fran Larue is our Vice Chair. And the annual report. Since my last report in August, when Tony was up here, since August, the zoning board has had 12 regular meetings and one non-public session with legal counsel. The board is presented with 113 agenda items, 36 petitions for variances, special exceptions, requests for rehearing, and appeals for administrative decisions. And since I wrote this, we had a session with the town lawyer for legal advice, which was needed, appreciated. Thank you very much for doing that, Eileen, getting that moving, and I think it's, I think it's going to be very helpful. I won't go through all the numbers, but I would just point out that the most common thing, of course, is yard setbacks. Somebody wants to build a shed a little bit too close to the neighbor or something, and we try to weigh, you know, get the neighbor's opinion and weigh the pros and cons. We have so many irregular lots in, in Merrimack that it, it's a pretty common problem, you know, we have odd-shaped, small lots. The next, which has really kind of increased lately, is the signage. Everybody's wanting a sign closer and closer to the highway. And it's really, to me, it's a source of agitation because the, our current laws are not as clear as I'd like them to be. I think it's been mentioned before by the Chair and others that probably a little antiquated. We probably need to take a look at updating. We had a couple of odd ones miscellaneous that was new to me after six years. One was a line adjustment. The person simply wanted to increase the size of one lot, making it more conforming, which at the same time decreased the other and made it less conforming, and we, you know, couldn't figure out where any harm was, any problem with it, although we didn't have any precedent. And then there was a boathouse that was actually on the water outside the property line, which we hadn't dealt with before. The, historically, in the last five or six years, we've been running around 84% approval rate. This, this last year, we're up to 91. And I really can't explain it other than there's been so many kind of, I guess, simple no-brainer type things that you just, we said, we said yes before, makes it very hard to say no now, even though we try not to use precedent as part of the decision process. At the meeting last August 22nd, I was elected chairman, and Fran was elected vice chairman. Tony Pellegrino and Patrick Dwyer continue to serve as full members. Leonard Wooster continues to serve as an alternate. The board welcomes new full member Kevin Shea and new alternates Rich Kinescu and Nathan Barry. The board and the department wish to thank the former chairman, Tony Pellegrino. Staff support is provided by the Community Development Director Timothy Thompson, Planning and Zoning Administrator Nancy Larson, Assistant Planner Jeffrey Morissette, Recording Secretary Xena Jordan, and clerical staff of the Community Development Department. Any questions?
Well, the, the meeting you had with Town Council, that was sort of like a review of process, procedure, legal issues involved in, in your work?
Yeah, we, we actually kind of went through procedure this time. We're going to meet maybe one or two more times, for sure. He's thinking maybe three times a year, depending, I'm not sure what'll get worked out. One of the things that's going to be really important to us is to be advised of recent court decisions. Because since, as you know, you always talk about Boken, Simplex, since those two Supreme Court decisions, it's all over the board. You have no idea what Supreme Court's going to decide on any given case. Lawyers don't know, and we're supposed to make a decision. But it, it's going to be kind of a three-phase, and we really went into process how to not make mistakes in the presentation, you know, covering all the bases, that sort of thing. I think it's going to be very beneficial.
How to make motions, not make motions.
Yeah.
Award them so they, they go through. And it was, it's very enlightening, very, very enlightening.
Especially for the newer people, because we had so many new people, we really did need to start the basics and, and work up. But I, again, I thank the board for allowing that to happen.
Anytime. Pam?
Was it, is it LGC, or what kind of group is where the training, I know that you guys had talked about wanting to pursue, you know, some training and educational for, for new members. What, what is exactly the agency or the board that's, that's going to, you know, do it?
Yeah, the Government Council.
It is the Government Council, okay.
Yeah. They offer, I think it's three separate, three or four separate courses that you can take. I think it's four or five, actually. You can choose from different things that you're interested in or you feel like you need help in, from, from reading a draft to running a, a smart meeting.
Any other, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Phil, how are the, how are the new guys working out? Nathan and Richard and, and Kevin, how have they assimilated themselves so far?
Oh, good. Yeah, they, they look like they're going to be great assets. The, their, their youth is going to be a great plus because they got the energy.
They ask some very interesting questions also.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking for, looking for the right answer, so it's.
It's really good to, because something that we've made a decision on maybe, you know, maybe 80 times, it's new to them, and they go, well, how do you come to that, and why this? And it's really, really good for the board. And yes, they're, they all seem, all three of them seem to be going to be great.
They keep us on our toes.
So you're happy with the dynamic, the newer, I guess there's a newer dynamic that's existing at the, at the ZBA now?
Oh, yes.
Sure. And, and, and it's become dynamic, which is what you want, because you need that, you need that been there, done that group, and people go, what, why, why do we do it this way?
Right.
And sometimes it's hard to explain, because as you know, we function as a jury, and the courts are all over the place on their decisions, so it's like, well, this seems more fair than that decision, so therefore.
Good, I'm happy to hear that.
But yeah, it's very good to have the young people on the board, that's for sure.
Okay. Come again?
Did you have something nice to say about me?
All right, can we make a separation here? Okay, any other questions from the council? We're glad that that's working out. We were very impressed when we interviewed the candidates, the people that expressed the interest with how much research they had done prior to the coming to the interviews and their understanding and knowledge, even though it was rather new of the process, so.
And you could, and you could tell that already paid off. Their very first meeting, they were prepared. They had really looked into it, thought things through, had good questions, and good choices.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Especially the brevity. Okay, comments from the press and public. Anyone wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none. We have a public hearing at this time. Donation of acceptance from Merrimack, from Merrimack Crime Line. The Town Council will hold a public hearing to authorize the acceptance of a donation of $8,652 for the Merrimack, from Merrimack Crime Line to the Merrimack Police Department to pay for the remaining cost of the new electric sign hookup installed on Babusick Lake Road in front of the police station pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. Captain Dudash, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Giacapuzzi.
Good evening.
Fire, I will open the public hearing at 7:24.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board. Just to give a little history on what, how it came about that we are asking for this donation. Back in the early winter, late winter into the spring, we came in front of the board with a wish to expend some money from the Abbey Griffin Fund. At that point, the Chief, Chief Doyle put out some recommendations, put some recommendations to spend the money, and at that point, we came up with the idea for a new electronic sign. I came in front of the board to propose that sign. At the same time, we're looking for a community partner, and at that point, Crime Line stepped up. And here today is Pete Giacapuzzi's with me, and a lot of some other members from Crime Line. So at that point, we did a, some research on the sign. We put out the bid for the electronic sign, and New Hampshire signs of Dairy won the bid at about just under $16,000. That didn't include electrical hookup. So at that point, the money that was approved by the council was applied to the deposit. Crime Line has come to, to the aid as a partner to, to pay the rest. So at this point, we're coming in front of the board today for hoping, hoping for you guys to accept a donation from Crime Line for $8,625. That would be the balance on the sign, along with electrical hookup.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
I was wondering, Phil, do you recall, did Crime Line pay for the original? He's flashing the mic, but my mic is on, so I don't know if it's not working.
I don't know.
All right, in the back, they let us know if somebody doesn't turn on a mic, so I hear this clicking in my ear.
You just have to get closer to it.
Yeah, all right, sorry about that.
Speak up.
I was just, did Crime Line also pay for the original granite sign that was out there? Do you recall?
No, I believe that was paid by No, I believe that was paid by the, the local union. Domantine?
No, actually, that sign was part of the design and build of the, of the monument, the memorial, printed.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Jackie?
This is how observant I am. Now, there's a new sign there.
Yes, there is.
But it's not this particular one. Is there an additional?
No, this is the sign that we're talking about. Has been, it's been installed by New Hampshire Sign in the past, past month. It has not been hooked up. We're just waiting for, actually, it's Custom Electric who has given the price, and we'll be hooking it up hopefully tomorrow.
This is going to be great. It'll be a moving sign, kind of a thing, alerting people to...
Correct. I've been in contact with Nancy Larson from, for zoning regulations. We're going to try to stick to exactly what the regulations are on, on displaying such as twenty-minute static displays. In a case of emergency, we might have to go away from that to get the message out to people in case of, you know, hurricanes, floods, any type of emergency messages.
Yeah, that's terrific.
Dan?
Did you fill in the blanks? When you, you're, you're asking to, for eighty-six-hundred, but the sign was, what, was fifteen thousand? So where, where did the other money come from?
Actually, it's fifteen thousand. I think it's just under sixteen thousand. It's fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. So sixteen thousand for the sign.
Yeah.
We received nine thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars from Abbey Griffin.
Abbey Griffin, okay.
And the balance will be from Crime Line.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Any other comments from the, from the council? Looks a lot better than, than manual one.
Thank you.
It's a lot cleaner. It's a lot, you know...
And our wish is to hopefully have it hooked up before the weekend for, for the expo. We're hoping to have that done earlier in the week, but hopefully tomorrow.
All right. Very good. Okay. All right, at this point, I'll open up the floor to the public for any comments from the public regarding this request. Does anybody wish to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven twenty-eight. What is the desire of the council on this matter? Finley?
I move that the council accept the donation of eight thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars from the Merrimack Crime Line with thanks to the Merrimack Police Department to pay for the remaining costs of the new electronic sign, including the electrical hookup.
Second? Yeah. It's two different prices. On here, it's twenty-five, a little dislocated, and on the agenda, it's fifty-two.
All right, what was the number?
The number here is twenty-five. Here, it's fifty-two.
Fifty-two is what you want? No, that's what I said, so I knew that. Thank you.
Yes, you did. Tom's right.
Congratulations.
It did say twenty-five.
Okay. Second in black councillor Harrington. Any further discussion on the matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Please thank Crime Line too, also for continuing service. Any legislative update from state representatives? Town managers report.
Okay. The MYA conversion to natural, natural gas is complete. We should see a significant cost and savings of, on heat this winter. The capital improvements plan has been received from each department. I will begin my review and going, going in front of the planning board in early November, after I bring it to the council. Voters are reminded that there is now only one polling location, and the hours for voting are seven AM to seven PM. The November sixth election will be held in the gym at the high The paving program is coming to an end for the season. Lawrence Road is scheduled to be paved for Monday, October first. The wire road, road bridge replacement over Babuza Brook is currently out to bid, with bids due in by October sixteenth. This project is proposed to replace the existing corrugated metal pipe with pre-cased concrete beam deck. The new bridge will have a span of sixty-two feet. Construction is expected to start in early spring of two thousand and twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay, sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna butcher this name. I'm sorry. Arthur Getzenowitz.
Waylon.
Waylon. And Lance Steiner will receive the Congressional Law Enforcement Award on October eighth.
Excellent.
Very good. Okay, any questions for the town manager on the report, or any other matters? None? Moving right along. No consent agenda item, old business. We have acceptance of the concept of a dog park in Watson Park. Tom? This is presented by the Parks and Recreation Committee, represented by Chairman Tom Thornton. The town council will consider acceptance of the concept of a dog park in Watson Park as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, as, as Caltemehan was saying, our committee voted on September nineteenth to vote to endorse the dog park. That's wrong. Let me get the pen. What's that?
Oh.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we voted to accept, actually endorse, the dog park at Watson Park. And tonight, as you stated, we are here to ask the town council to accept the dog park at Watson Park.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Phil.
Tom, was there any other sites in the community that were considered for a dog park?
Uh, no, not at this time. I know we had that fund, that Watson Park fund, that we distributed the money. And that is currently the spot that we're looking. I mean, there could be other spots that we could look at as well, but we have not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dan?
I probably have a lot to say on this subject, and it's been one that's been on the agenda for several days, and I really put a lot of thought into it. And as much as I respect your work and your opinions about that location, I want to make it clear, I'm for a dog park, but I can't support the location any longer. And I want to try and explain why, and try to convince the rest of the board. A year or two ago, before the, the grass was green at Watson Park, the dog park has been talked from the very beginning. And I probably, like thousands of other residents in Merrimack, have always said, yeah, dog park. But I think it took time for the park to become whatever it was going to become. And this summer, kind of, I saw for the first time what this park is going to be for us. And I see that the picnic tables, I saw a filled parking lot, a lot of the times, swimmers, picnickers, people playing, people just walking a dog on a leash. And now this other curveball comes in, the Rotary Club. They're presenting an unbelievable piece of architecture in the form of this gazebo. Doesn't even fit. I think it's too big to be called just a gazebo. I mean, the bandstand is, huh?
It's a pavilion.
A pavilion. Yeah, and that's more, that's more grander, because I think when you see the scale of that, I see this grand pavilion in the park, and for the first time, in my mind, I don't see the dog park as a good neighbor to the pavilion. I see visions of wedding gowns and, and people getting married. I see a reception of families, and then I see a bunch of dogs in the corner with a gravel pit and a, and a fence. And for the first time, I just see this mess in the corner, a, a, a collected mess, but a good mess, you know, because, like, again, a, a dog park is great. But then I see this pavilion and everything else that goes with what the park has become, and, and the cars. Again, I want to keep going on, because I think, I, I had, I do have a lot to say. So an example, just this past Sunday, I went to Benson Wild Animal Farm in Hudson. They have, they, they redid that whole park as a park in Hudson. And they have a dog park, too. And I counted the cars, and it was Sunday afternoon, one o'clock, maybe two o'clock, and it was twenty-two cars parked in Hudson with, with twenty-three or thirty dogs in, in the gated area. And it was, it was great. It was successful. You could just see that the place was, was filled with all kinds of people. I'm beginning to think that Watson Park is just the wrong spot. Another avenue is, we have a town center committee, and they're putting a lot of energy and design ideas about our town center. Our town center, as you know, is debatable from where its location is. I'd say it's Babuza Lake Road and DW Highway. That is the center. But it stretches from the library corner down to the fire station. And Watson Park is part of that center. So I start to thinking Hudson, Amherst, Manchester, many of these other towns have dog parks. Not one of them is in the center of their city. So if we're trying to make our center beautiful and accentuate the positive things that we have, I'm just not sure the dog park anymore fits that spot. And I really want one. And I think Merrimack has a lot of land, and again, timing is everything with me. We have it on an agenda soon to talk about what are we going to do with Wa, with Wasserman Park. And to me, Wasserman Park, let's keep it simple. To me, that has the infrastructure, has a parking lot ready to go. Maybe where the building is, where the office is, that parking lot is only has, only filled when there's an event going on. But if you could imagine that parking lot as a basis for the parking lot, and then come in and take out some trees in that back corner where some of the cabins are, and presto, for some cheap money, take out the stumps, make sure you file a permit first.
[laughing]
Kind of an inside joke for some people.
Speaking from experience?
You take out the stumps, you know, get a permit to have a little field area, and then you have a dog park without a lot of thousands of dollars being, being expensed. But, so that, I, I guess that's it. I just can't stress enough how I'm, I'm behind the effort of having a dog park. I think our town deserves one with the amount of dogs we have. What is it, forty, four thousand dogs?
Four thousand five.
Four thousand dogs. I mean, I, I'm sure wherever we open it, it's going to be a huge success. But for the first time over the last several weeks, and again, I think it took us to see what Watson Park was to become. And having it on the drawing board five years ago, it was a no-brainer. Many of us all would, would have just put our hands up and say, oh, sure, let's have a dog park there. It seemed natural. But this summer, kind of changed it for me. So I don't know if any other councillors might feel the same. I hope you do, because I'd like to persuade you in thinking that I think that's the wrong spot for, for the future of our town center. So, thank you.
Jackie as well.
Yeah. Nancy, and then Jackie.
I guess in my, having a hard time reconciling, talking about it now, or thinking about alternatives. I'm not saying that your thoughts are, your perspective is, is a good perspective. But I think it's unfair to the committee, who's been working on this for so long, to all of a sudden, when they have received, you know, encouragement from us and from Parks and Rec, to all of a sudden say, oh, we don't think it's a good idea. Okay, so I, I'm not disagreeing with your concept, but I think it's very unfair now to be able to say that to them. I think maybe convincing, providing options, because it's not going to be done tomorrow. There's still time before the, the completion of it. And maybe with the same amount of money, they get twice the size of a park. That would be more of an encouragement than saying, you know, and that was part of Mr. Watson's vision, too. I mean, we can't say that that wasn't presented right from the get-go and has continued. So if in fact your option is a reasonable one, which is, it sounds like they could get twice the area for the same amount of money. That would be a persuasive argument, rather than saying, we don't want it there. Because I feel like we're backing out of an agreement we've implied for a long time. That's all.
Can I get the answer in response, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I, I take blame for not being more forthwith with your committee. If I had these concerns, I, I should have, I should have given you a heads up. But it all came, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't come to me that way. And, and they formally only asking us tonight, I mean, they've been on their way to ask us, so you're, you're, you're right on. But it didn't really crystallize until the last few weeks, I guess. Just, again, it was all about seeing, driving by it all the time, all summer, I guess. And then the pavilion. Then when the pavilion became more real, and here it comes, it just kind of changed. That's, that was the turning point. Just, if I could defend why, maybe I didn't speak up sooner.
Okay. All yours.
Okay. I find it a little ironic that there was a green factory building there through most of my residents in, in Merrimack. And when it's removed and some brass starts coming, now it's all of a sudden too fancy for a dog park.
[laughing]
True, right?
True.
Yeah. There, there's a couple other reasons. I kind of have, have, you drove around town one day recently, looking, especially at Wasserman Park, to see if there was a level and cleared area. And you know, I was thinking of all the children that have, that go to day camp there. And I know how, I'm sorry to say this, but careless a lot of dog owners are, and they'll let the dog out of the car, and the dog just runs. And I, I'm uncomfortable with a dog park near children at a, at a summer camp. I think, you know, we can talk about that, but I think the area where we're planning it, and where Mr. Watson wanted it, and that original charrette, and people said that's what they wanted, I think it's a good spot. Not only that, but it has an alcove, so it, there's a natural shape for it to go. And so it's not really visible from, from the street. It kind of hides in there. And the rest of the park can be a lovely, you know, with the pavilion and the trellis that I noticed today they were starting on, the pergola or whatever it is. So it'll be real pretty from the street. The, I don't think it'll really show, and people seem to like it there.
Thanks. I, I mentioned last time that I wasn't particularly in favor of the dog park. And I did that specifically so that we didn't go through all of these meetings with nobody ever saying anything. And I, I believe Dan has put it a lot more eloquently than I ever did, as far as why you might, or might not want it there. I tend to agree with a lot of what he just said, as far as the, the elegance of having it in our town center or at that particular location. And while it may have been stated that a dog park would be a great thing to have there since the park opened or the park committee was put together, it certainly wasn't presented to the town council or the Board of Selectmen that way, the initial efforts of trying to create Watson Park, at least not in any of the meetings that I sat in, where we talked about having green space and open space for kids to play ball and, and people to walk and just enjoy nature and things of that nature. So I was always a little bit taken aback and surprised by the concept of, of carving out a piece of this to be a, a dog park, per se, and using leftover fencing or, or something like that, and having it not be fairly elegant as far as that's concerned. I haven't been back there to see it since a little bit of the brush and shrubs have been cleared away. So I'm sure that it, it could look nicer, and I just don't know what the, the real vision is that anybody has for that. But I'm not a great fan of, of spending money to, to go off and create a dog park. I understand that we're planning to create this out of donations and things of that nature. We're not looking for town funding to do that. So that's a great idea. But, so I'm, I'm not even a particular fan of dog parks, although I like dogs. I've had them in the past. I don't now. And, but I've never, I've never felt an urge to bring them to a park to let them run. I've always taken them out in the field or something like that where I had them under control and, and could take them out myself. So I realize that some people can't do that. And that might make a very good argument for having a dog park. I just, I'm a little bit concerned that this is the right place. Although I don't know if, if moving into Watson, Wasserman Park or any other particular park would work better than what we currently have. But I, I've got reservations about the whole concept.
Okay. Jackie?
Yes. You know, something Dan said resonated with me a lot, too, because I, I've even been to a wedding over Leavitt Park and, you know, Port, Portsmouth. And there would be. I can picture weddings there and so forth. But I've been thinking right along, and I think the dog park, a subcommittee, some dog parks are only open on weekends. I hope that this one will be open much more. But I think that there's nothing wrong with shutting it down on a Saturday after, you know what I mean? If there was a special event there. Another thing is that I would recommend a probationary term, because it, it seems like the rules they've come up with are fine. And, and I think that they haven't come to terms yet about the real oversight of it and checking to see that the gates are locked or whatever, you know, place is clean and so forth. And I would recommend a year or two years, whatever we thought, hm?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah. Would be appropriate to, to oversee it. And with the caution that it will be taken down and put someplace else if, if it isn't kept well and safe.
I'm going to let Finley go, and then I'll come back to Dan, okay?
Please, a comment?
Sure. Finley?
Thanks, Tom.
Sorry, Dan.
I'll tell you-
I'll tell you, for me, I, I wasn't on the Board of Selectmen when this was, when Mr. Watson gave this property to the town or gave the funds for the property for the, for the town. But a year or so later, I was on the council, and I do remember in discussions, there, he always spoke about the dog park. And I don't know if it never came up initially, I, I don't remember that. I didn't pay attention to those meetings to that degree. But, but that's, you know, for me, that's why I'm supporting it, because we've, I've heard it for now for six years. And, and actually, the first time I heard any conversation against it was when you'd made that comment a few, month or two ago. And because I, I'd always heard it, I thought that that's what it would be. So I see merit in your comments, but I'm hard pressed to shift gears, I guess, at this point, for me.
Dan?
I guess I'm looking for us to be more patient, because, again, it was conceptual, you know, so you, you may be right that he wanted it at the beginning, but it was gifted and now it's us to manage.
Sure.
And we didn't know what this would become. And I think we're still learning what it's becoming, because it's still so new. To me, it feels like a baby. You know, this Watson Park's a baby, it's growing, and, you know, what's it going to be 10 years from today? So my question to you is, I, I think it's going to be very, very successful. And if it is, it's the wrong spot. It's be 20 cars, it's going to be busy, it's going to be very active. And that's, and I want it to be successful, I know it will be. And I'm, that's my fear. I'm going to think it's going to be too successful, and it's going to drown out the park for other, other things. That's, that's really where I'm coming from. Seeing some of these other parks, especially the one in Hudson, you're really impressed. You wonder, there's 30 dogs running around. With 30 dogs means 20 something cars, because maybe there's a couple of, you know, owners with two dogs. But it's, they're, dog parks are busy places. If you went to see some, you'd have maybe your eyes open a little bit more to say, wow, it's pretty, pretty popular. So I guess that's my fear, is the, is the success. So I am latching on to your comment about the probationary period. But then again, I hate to spend four grand on a fence, and if, you know, all of a sudden a year later, it's, you know, we find out that it is so successful and there's too many people there. And then your comment about kids in the park, my, my, my thought was the dogs running out to the street, that the parking lot's a little too close to the street. A dog isn't going to get hit by a car at Wasserman Park, but at Watson Park, they're, they're a few feet from DW Highway. You know, if you don't latch them on out of the car right away, off to the road they go, eh, you know.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's their problem.
Yeah, I, I, but it only came to my head, I'm, I'm running off with the mouth every time, every time when you say something, I want, I, I feel like I encountered something as the more I'm thinking about it. I'm, I'm undone for tonight.
The dog owner is supposed to have the animal under control.
Yeah, that's true, true.
They are, in both cases.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot on the table. You guys know where I'm coming from, but...
The, the, you know, fortunately for us, the, the, the park has become what we had hoped it would become. A magnet. And a very well-used place. Part of the difficulty in some of this is that, you know, we're going to start to have competing interests and use. And that's going to raise some other issues as we go along. But I agree with, you know, I, I, you know, I have heard from the beginning that, you know, this was one of the pieces that Mr. Watson specifically wanted to have included in that, in that concept of whatever it became, that there would be a dog park there. And that has always been there, from whenever I got involved in this whole, this whole piece, and it was before it was presented to the town. He had several meetings with other people to, to test the waters, if you will, for the concept, and what it would take and how it would work. And that's always been part of the, that's always been part of the, of his, was part of his plan. So, you know, that's a piece of it. Again, it's, you're sitting here and you're going, eh, trying to weigh those other issues because this thing is growed. Okay, it's just, it's like, you know, not exactly like a weed, but you know, you dump a lot of water and fertilizer on it, and darn it, things grow on like crazy. And that's what we wanted. You know? So we're both blessed and cursed by, by the success. And then the seven of us sit here and go, okay, now how do we manage this one? Okay, so that's, you know, that's part of the, that's part of, you know, the, of, of what we're, what we're trying to deal with here. Finley?
Next time. Would there be a possibility that this conversation, this could be tabled or what have you, to have that discussion with the people who've been very active in trying to come to, you know, to bring this dog park to fruition and have that conversation about other possible locations? And if it doesn't work out, if they're in disagreement, then come back here for a final vote by us? Because I, I mean, if, it would be easier, because I'm, I know what my vote is tonight. And, you know, if that conversation could happen, because it probably hasn't at this point, I don't, well, Tom said, no, that they had not spoken about other locations. If we could have them do that, and then come back to us one last time, I hate to do it, but...
It's only two weeks if you have to...
Well, I would hope that you give them a little bit more time. If that is your motion, if that is a motion on your...
I'm just thinking two weeks, they've already put so much effort, I think two weeks just to iron out these last second thought, second guesses, should, might, should be enough. I'd...
I mean, now there's other things, like we did with the pavilion, we had to go through, you know, before we had, we could do anything, we presented to the town council. And then after that, we then, in baby steps, you know, they wanted to put the foundation, so we had to come back and get approval for that. So the more time that, that we take, the less time, I mean, we really want this up as well. I mean, we, we'd like it up for May 2013 is, is the date that we're shooting for. But, you know, the, the more blocks in the road we get, the, the, it just pushes us back further and further. And, and like you said, the volunteers are doing a phenomenal job with the park doing it. I mean, if, if it's, I mean, I think, can we just have the, the acceptance tonight of the concept of the park and, and just maybe not have it, you know, if it's Watson Park, great. And if it's, and if the subcommittee thinks otherwise, maybe somewhere else, you know, just going on what you guys are saying. But just have the acceptance of the concept.
Of a dog park?
Of a dog park.
I predict that's a six to one vote.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Come on, Tom.
Point of order?
Yeah.
But if, if, if we were to change the motion to do accept the concept of a dog park...
We have no motion.
Excuse me?
We have no motion.
I understand that, but wouldn't that have to be re-agendaed, is what I'm, what I'm getting at? Because the...
To do, I'm sorry, go ahead, start from the beginning.
Because, because the agenda says to accept the concept of Watson Park, the dog park in Watson Park. In my understanding of procedures here, that if we were to change it, it would have to be, it would have to be another agenda item for a future meeting.
If, if, if the item were to be tabled in some fashion, it would be with a, hopefully with a date certain, that they would come back. There's nothing that prevents us from not accepting it or from changing the parameters of what we want to do.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, that's, you know, part of the, the discussion. You know, part of what we're here for is, is the, exactly the kind of discussion we're having this evening, as to how this goes. So, you know, if, if, you know, we've let people know this is what we're thinking, and, or what has been proposed to us, okay? If we want to ask them to do some additional work, or if they want to do something, or to ask them for some other direction or something like that, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that.
Okay.
Okay. Jackie?
Another thought about this whole thing at Watson Park, as I said, it's in an alcove kind of a place, and it had been really neglected. For some reason, it hadn't been cut and maintained and the brush and so forth. And it's really been, I guess, at a raw, a very raw state. And now it's starting to be a little bit developed. And if the, if the dog park is responsible for grooming it a bit, the fencing, it can be moved, and, and I wouldn't be a first, when things change a little bit, to move it, the fencing can be picked up and moved, the dog park can be moved. And I'm in favor of putting it there.
Well...
Have its probationary period, and then possibly moving it later.
Can we have a motion of some sort on this matter?
Yes. I, I move that we accept the concept of a dog park being at Watson Park. This to be in a, for a probationary period of two years.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I think that, the reason I, I support the motion, oh, sorry about that.
No. Jackie, why don't you speak to your motion?
I believe that a lot of people want it there. It's a very handy place. But I think the two most important things are, it's been on the charrette before the park was even there, and it's been on the master plan and approved, I, I might say, by the council and within the best plan. The second thing is that it's cleared. I think that's a big thing with me. It's level and it's cleared. And they have almost enough money available to them now to actually go through with it. It's almost shovel, so-called shovel, drill-ready, I guess, because we can't shovel very deep there. Sorry about that.
Finley?
I, I was just going to say, knowing that it's probationary period, it would allow people to have those conversations about possible locations, thinking maybe it might not fit in. But I definitely support your motion, Jackie.
Dan?
And I was hoping, Jackie, maybe if you withdrew your motion to reconsider Finley's motion, what he said about saying, could we take two weeks to maybe iron out the rest of these thoughts? But if you wanted the answer tonight, then that's...
I don't want to, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then that's fine. But would you consider maybe just taking a breather for a week or two?
I, it, it's possible. I am very confident that there is no other level, cleared spot that's safe for dogs in town.
Watson, Wasserman Park's got a hundred acres, I mean, there's...
I've looked all over Wasserman Park, and I did not find that...
Okay.
Did you look behind Cinemagic, Councilman Floyd?
Pardon me?
Did you look behind Cinemagic?
I did not.
There's property behind there that connects to the trails that run directly to the South Heagan River where we have our bridge, with Apple Parking.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's also the old dog pound at the wastewater treatment plant that has, it's underutilized land, has an existing facility. Place where fencing can be set up. My only concern about your motion for probationary period is, let's suppose the probation, probationary period doesn't take and we decide to remove the fence. I don't think we can remove the poles. Because we, we're putting poles into the ground, and once we penetrate the seal that's underneath the ground, you can't remove the poles. Those poles are permanent.
Are we penetrating the seal?
That, when we have, a year ago, when we had, when we had, and the only reason why I'm bringing this up, is when we were talking about Wright Avenue a year ago, we were told that once, once those things that are in the ground, they're in the ground, they can't be removed. Because once they go below the level of where that clean fill is, and you make a hole, you are now have exposed, by pulling out, you've now exposed the atmosphere to the potential pollutant instead of below that, that particular seal. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm glad you brought all those points up, and I thought they were good points. I think that the six-foot fence that, that they're talking about, I personally hope that, that that isn't decided on. I think that is unruly and all. And the less fencing, the, less the pole can, has to go down. Secondly, Bill, I think that the, the places where you pointed out are private property. Are they town-owned?
Town-owned.
Town-owned.
Right, but Conservation Commission...
That's exactly correct.
It's not cleared, they're true.
Yeah, it's, no, it's cleared. Demon and I, we go running there all the time. I park down to Wildcat Falls, come up, right up to Cinemagic, do a loop, come back out. And that's, I mean, that's a separate issue that you'd have to work with wastewater, but I'm just, I'm just, again, which is why I asked the question of the Chairman of Parks and Rec, have we fully vetted other locations in town? And I, and I think I've at least presented two locations that quite honestly haven't been fully vetted. Because as it stands to me right now where I sit, I, I'm having a hard time wanting to put a dog park at Watson Park. I think at the very beginning, when I sat as Chairman of the ETCAC, when we looked at the town senate committee, when we were envisioning the town center, certainly was part of, of the initial thinking. I don't, I don't disagree with that. But I'm also mindful of the testimony that Michelle presented about, I believe, a month ago when they made the actual presentation. She remarked about the fact that people were beginning to congregate and regregate there. They were using the, using the river, they were using the picnic benches. You know, we got kids, you know, kids playing ultimate frisbee and tag rush football and volleyball there. After my road race, we congregated there after our road race for our barbecue there. You know, Councilman Mayhoun's point is well-taken, it's a magnet. It's meant to draw people into the center of the town, so that people can, can, can meet and traverse and, and do things in town. Yeah, I want them to bring their dogs there. I'm a doggone, I want them to bring their dogs there as well. But I think if you're looking for, it's probably the wrong terminology to use, but if we're looking for a wrapper room for dogs, I don't think that that's, at least from my standpoint, I don't, I, in light of what has transpired over the last 18 months with Watson Park, it's, the concept of what we once saw, I think, has changed. You look at Greeley Park, you look at downtown Amherst, those are locations where people go. It's, it's a delict, people go, they have their pictures there, they have, you know, weddings there. But then you look at what Nashua was doing, they're looking to build at your Dicky Farm on, on Main Dunstable Road. They're looking at a, at a facility behind Holman Stadium adjacent to their park. So they've chosen two different locations to cite their dog parks that are not exactly in the center of town. I, I checked, there are 28 dog parks, both in existence and proposed right now in the state of New Hampshire. I looked at the ones that were fenced, no leash. Dairy 102, Dairy off of 102 is opposite the transfer station. The one in Rochester's on Rochester Neck Road, which is subtly from the, which is subtly from the center of town. Concord's Dog Park is located at the corner of Old Turnpike and Manchester, which is down adjacent to their business district. It's not in the center of their particular city. Based on the research that I've done, I think it behooves the community that if we really want to present the town center and have Watson Park be one of the crown jewels that we all agree, we, we have crown jewels. We've got Watson, we've got Abbey Griffin, we've got Horse Hill, and I can go on. If we want to maintain the particular quality of life of these particular crown jewels, I think we really should revisit and re, and, and vet other locations that may be more applicable and suitable for our four-legged friends.
I thought I had an offer.
Yeah.
I'll tell you later.
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilwoman Boyd, I think you have made some excellent points, and I just wish that these things had been said, it wasn't your fault, I'm not blaming you, but I wish that these things had been said last year. My loyalties are, are definitely, as everyone knows, with Watson Park. I would like to see it continue to come to fruit. That said, I, I think that Councilwoman Boyd is correct. I think that it should, these places, in all fairness to the town of Merrimack and the people of Merrimack, these places should be looked at and, and within a cup, a two-week period, including, you know, those, those with interest and other, other people in town, whoever wants to be involved with this. I amend my...
Do you withdraw your motion?
I, yes, I withdraw it. I withdraw my motion, and I make a motion that we have a educational period, a fact-finding period of two weeks.
Would you make the motion that we accept in theory a dog park in Merrimack? Because I would support that.
And further make a motion to, include in that motion is a, that we approve of the concept of a dog park in Merrimack.
Second.
Nancy?
If, let's say, it is determined at some point in the future it's not going to go in Watson, what happens to the funds? Because remember, there's grant...
I asked that two weeks ago.
There's grant monies that are allotted to, what are you looking at that for? No, there's grant money established for Watson, not for the dog. And a couple of weeks ago, we designated some money to the pavilion. There was money at that point designated for dog park things. So, my question is, if it doesn't, if it is not established at Watson, does that have an impact in the accessibility of funds for Dog Park if it's somewhere else?
Eileen?
I know it sounds confusing, but the, the Watson Park Fund with this program was set up, this, this grant was a $40,000... this grant was a $40,000 grant, which was a matching grant. So, there were more than, a little bit more than $40,000 that was expended prior to getting reimbursed. So, including some in-kind services. So, I consider, and I believe, they signed off basically saying that we had achieved everything that wanted to, that needed to be done, and it didn't include a dog park. So, the answer, the short answer is that that money is available for...
So it's not in danger?
No.
That's all I need. Thank you.
May I offer a further friendly amendment to make at the October 25 meeting of the council? Give them a little time. Rather than trying to jam it into two weeks. Too much information.
Would you clarify that motion then?
Essentially, they're asking, the motion is to request that Parks and Rec review other possible locations for a dog park, to report back to the council no later than October 25, 2012.
But we are accepting the concept.
Accept the concept of a dog park.
Period.
And to ask the Parks and Recreation Committee to review other possible locations. Does that, is that the gist of the action contemplated? Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion carries six to one. So we'll... Look forward to seeing you on the 25th of October.
We look forward to it as well. Thank you.
I'm sure.
But we have two more agenda items right now.
Yes.
Don't go.
Next item, acceptance of donation for a dog park. The Town Council to approve the acceptance of donations received for a dog park as recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission Committee pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article 8-15. The reason there was no public hearing on this is it does not exceed the $5,000 threshold that requires a public hearing. Therefore...
So it was the Dog Park Subcommittee does a lot of fundraising, and they raised $3,345. So that's what we're actually, my committee, we endorsed it and accepted it 9-0-0. And we're asking you to accept the donations for the dog park as well now.
That was $3,045?
$3,345. $3,345.
Any other questions from the council? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council...
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council approve the acceptance of donations received for a dog park as recommended by the Parks and Rec Committee pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8:15. And then furthermore, that the Town Manager and/or the Finance Director be authorized to sign any or lawful documents that may apply to this.
Would you please include the amount in there?
I apologize. The amount of $3,345? Or, say, $1,394.10.
No, no, that's the next one. That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Okay. $3,345, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Hearn.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Dwyer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0-0. Next item, release of funds for the dog, for dog park donations. This is to consider the request of Park and Recreation Committee's request and recommendation to release $1,394.10 from dog park donations to reimburse Teresa Machado and Michelle DeShara for T-shirts purchased for a fundraiser. Would you like to address that, please?
Yes. So, out of the $3,345 you guys, the council has just accepted, we would like to take 139410 out of that and pay for Michelle, pay Michelle, and basically reimburse Michelle and Teresa for the funds that they took out of pocket to buy T-shirts to support the dog park and start the fundraising procedures.
Questions? Paul?
Can you help me understand the numbers here? I'm seeing that somebody went out and bought 200 shirts. Do we have a bunch of them left over? Because it doesn't look like the donations received come close to that 1,300 number.
Yeah, they're, we still have...
How many shirts we have left over?
So we have like 60%, 60% of the shirts left over still, out of the amount that they did purchase. But they did put all the money upfront. And then again, the money that we get from the shirts, I mean, is going to go right back into the dog park fund, which is getting them paid on the money they took out personally.
And I don't have any problem with reimbursing somebody to put their money out. But I guess I'm wondering if this turned out to be the right way to do this, or whether we overbought or something like that? Or what's the plan from now to recoup those funds?
Yeah, well, I know Teresa sells them at her office, at a shop at Pet Choice. And I know when they go to different, the farmer's market, they go to different events. They actually sell the T-shirts there as well. So, I mean, they will sell off the T-shirts, or they will recoup that money back. But they'll do it at different events.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy?
This is just a clarification question for me. Did they have to come, the Town Council asked permission to be reimbursed? I guess it's just a confused, I'm confused why they had to come to us.
It's, it's more than anything, it's to put, put a structure in place for the accepting of funds and the expending of funds. It's, it hasn't been as structured as we would normally like. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to put, as I said, put in place a structure for accepting and releasing, rather than just having the money come in and all of a sudden these bills show up. So...
Because I don't have a question about the initiation of a place and to have a donation process. So, does that mean that in the future, we'll be getting more requests for dispersments for other things?
I guess, this was an unusual one, because we're, this is kind of the first time since we've started collecting a decent-sized amount of money, so it's not $25 in and $25 out. We're just trying to establish some procedures and get them in place and be clear about it. So the answer is, I would imagine that we would collect a number of dispersments at some point and bring them forward for the future.
So the answer is yes. There'll probably be more of that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I was gonna make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll move that we allow the release of $1,394.10 from the park, dog park donation fund. $1,394.10. Did I?
Yeah. Sounded like four.
$1,394.10. Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0-0. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Next item is the polling places, establish boundaries and locations. This is an item that was tabled at the September 13 meeting of the Town Council. Pursuant to RSA 658:10, the Town Council's to establish the boundaries of the central polling place and eliminate the boundaries of prior polling places. This is the typical housekeeping item, just to comply with what the state laws require us in terms of polling places and designations and voting areas. So, the motion, we have been given two motions by Town Council to consider. The first one is to discontinue, and the second one is to establish. Nancy?
I'd like to do the first motion, please. I'd like to move to discontinue the use of St. John Newman Church, St. James Church, and James Master Cola, Cola, there's my Yankee coming out, upper elementary school as polling places for the town of Merrimack and to further redistrict the town into a single polling place to encompass the current town boundaries.
Moved and seconded.
Friendly amendment, Mr. Chairman. Everything that Nancy said except to include November 6, 2012, and every two elections thereafter.
No, no, your microphone.
To, I ask that the motion be amended to include the November 6, 2012 election and every election two years thereafter. Because the way that it's written right now...
What we're doing is discontinuing the polling places.
Right.
The next motion will establish the polling place.
But you're discontinuing the use in general without a date certain. You're establishing a single polling place with a date certain. To me, it seems to me, with the first motion, you need to have a date certain. Because based on the letter that Chairman Ortega presented to us, the school board provided a polling place for November general elections and for the upcoming election, November 6, and every two years thereafter. So therefore, the motion to discontinue only applies to the November elections and every two of the years thereafter. It doesn't take into, it includes the primary season and our municipal season. That's how I interpret that motion. And yes, I'm for both tonight.
Well, what we're doing in the vernacular is we're blowing up the three polling districts that we had, period. Period. That's all we're doing. Okay? So we have to take, take those off the books. And then, the next, then, the charter tells us that we're the ones that established the polling place 30 days prior. So...
You'll have to do it again at the next election, basically. You'll have to say, this is the new, the new polling place is the upper elementary school and discontinue the high school. Unfortunately, you have to do it at each one.
And, and that's okay. The reason for the separate motions, as I understand it, is in fact, it's the boundaries that we're dealing with at this moment. The polling place can be established 30 days prior, I guess, and...
And what I'm seeing is, is that, and what I'm seeing is, is that, fine, we're blowing up the boundaries, but we still haven't, we, you're gonna come back and we're gonna revisit boundaries based on municipal elections and primary elections?
Polling places, boundaries we're dealing with?
We're just saying there's one place.
In theory, once, today.
We're saying three to one is what we're saying with the first one.
Okay.
Right? It's just three to one.
Yep.
Okay.
Tom?
I guess I still have a little bit of heartache over it. I understand where Bill's coming from, but I've taken a little bit different tact. At the combined meeting that we had with the school board, it was stated that the Master Cola Elementary School is the defined polling place and cannot be changed until the Town Council votes to change it. Well, if we vote tonight to disband it and not have it be a polling place anymore, we no longer have particular access without getting permission from the school board to get back to the upper elementary school. And I would think that we would do anything but release that at this point, given the tenuous situation of where our polling places are going to be in the future. I would prefer that we disband St. John Newman and St. James, keep Master Cola Upper Elementary School as a polling place in town, and adjust the boundaries to include the entire town. And then, as necessary, every two years, we would adjust the polling location from the upper elementary school to the high school. And then we would have a set, established polling place.
What we have here is a failure to communicate. Cool hand, Luke.
Got it.
Okay.
So even though it's a three to one, three polling places to one, your concern about taking Master Cola out is we're leaving ourselves open to having nothing?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah. So, it shouldn't be polling places, it should be voting districts. Because that's what we had. We had three voting districts. And the polling places were John Newman, St. James, and the, and the Master Cola Upper Elementary School. So, we're, unfortunately, I believe we are weaving language here that needs, that is not exactly clear. We're interchanging, we're interchanging polling places for what we should be saying are voting districts. Because we've designated...
Are we in a time crunch?
I understand that. But then he goes down and uses this word here, okay? And what that, where it says into a single polling place, it should be a single polling district to encompass the current town boundaries. Yes. Yes, Dan?
I had a legal conversation with our Town Manager to ease Tom's concern. We could call in the National Guard and commandeer a school for elections. If, if there was some really animosity, some, just picture a scenario where the school board would not allow us to use the school.
Why are we going down this route?
I'm just saying.
Why are we going down this route?
It's a fantasy discussion. If the school board wishes to, do not allow us to use schools for an election...
That's not what we're saying.
We could commandeer a school, and that's when the Town Manager said, well, no, you can't commandeer a school. I said, well, you can call the National Guard, right? And she said, yes. So you... How did we get here? Can somebody please explain to me how we got here? Tom brought me here. All right. Just one clarification. If, you know, we are responsible to have a polling place. Tom's concerned about not being, having access to a school.
Talk about leaping into the abyss.
So...
Talk about leaping into the abyss.
All right.
I never would have brought up Marshall or in a conversation like this.
The best part about this job is debating policy. That's what this job's about.
Yeah, but you're now, you're now dealing with fantasy by your own admission.
I rest my case.
I would hope so.
We, we had three defined voting districts. That we are now disbanding and combining into one voting district.
And now that makes sense.
Okay.
Now I make sense.
And unfortunately, is because of the free use and the interchange of language here that's screwing this all up. Because the other three voting districts are, you know, we're gonna stand here and do a definition like you see when you're doing wards.
So should I modify the motion to...
Discontinue the use of the three voting districts.
Districts.
Lynn's not gonna like that.
Well...
I'll tell you why.
Pardon? Look, the guy's, we're paying this guy how much an hour? You ought to be better use of, make better use of language.
I think he's using it properly. Because he uses, the district might imply wards, and that is the one thing we do not have, is multiple wards here in this town.
Well, we called them something.
We call them polling places.
We call them districts?
We call them polling places.
Polling places just happen to be the places where they vote?
Exactly, exactly. So it, it erases any idea of people in wards and people being elected into the legislature.
Temporarily...
Mr. Chairman, motion to table to the...
Oh, you can't table. You're time-sensitive.
30 days.
No, 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 no. Look.
30 days.
Let's, let's, hold on. Hold on. We can table this temporarily this evening so that we look at how we've defined these places, okay? And then revisit this later on this evening. Take it off the table later on this evening, okay? And deal with it.
Do it now.
I don't have any further information.
Just explain what, what we are trying to do. It's, it's a little bit difficult, because normally, the way that you post your meetings is, or you post your elections, is on a warrant with the budget and that type of thing. We've had a number of different changes that have occurred from one to the next, to the next, to the next. And for clarity... And for clarity purposes, we wanted to make sure that this election was all set. So the point of these two motions was to address this, this election now for clarity because it's changed so many times. And then, and then at the, at the next election, you would have to establish another, have to, have to do it again, and it would, it would be on, probably on the warrant with the budget. Hereby declare that on such and such a date, at such and such a place, we will be discussing the budget and holding elections. So I'm perfectly fine with the language personally. I think we're overthinking it. What we're trying to do is we're trying to kind of clean up what's been done already and, and, and establish the place for this particular election.
I mean, why, if we have that opportunity and obligation to 30 days prior to the elections, set the polling place, so all three voting districts will be to the high school? I mean, all, we can just say that all three different polling districts, places, whatever they're called, will be at the high school.
We're eliminating three, creating one.
One, one, right, one, the boundaries of the district. I, no, I know, but I mean, if, if everybody, if we still have three voting districts and they're all going to the high school, there's still three voting districts going to one, their polling address, it just happens to be-
But you still have, the intent here is to eliminate them.
Yeah.
The intent here is to eliminate them.
And I, I don't see-
Blow them up.
Right, and I don't see this as being a problem the way it is either. I agree with Eileen, I, I, so it should be called districts, polling districts as opposed to polling, uh, uh, voting districts as opposed to polling places, I suppose. But, but by discontinuing them and including the James asked Master Cola Upper Elementary School doesn't preclude its use at a future time, they, you know, so I, that's why I don't see it's a problem to do what we're doing.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to discontinue the use of Saint John Newman Church, Saint James Church, and James Master Cola Upper Elementary School as polling places for the town of Merrimack and to further redistrict the town into a single polling place to encompass the current town boundaries.
One clarification question. It sounds like one of the concerns is, that was previously stated that Master Cola, it was, we were in at Master Cola, there was no way we could be moved out of it. Does this jeopardize that sense of security? That's all I'm asking?
In my mind, no.
Okay.
The school has sole decision as to what they do with the schools at any time. So if they decided to discontinue it, whether you've established it or not, they, they can say whether or not people will go there to vote, so I-
Even, even at Master Cola?
Yes.
Cause I got the sense that we were pretty much, and that's not the term, like, we had a lease, they, they couldn't change it on us.
I don't think they-
But that's not true.
It is not true, no.
Okay.
So I think, in our own inimitable way, we have pretty much discussed our intent on this and what we are trying to accomplish. So with that, I will call for a vote on the motion, as I stated it. So all those in favor of the motion, saying aye, I sang aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chairman.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries 511. Okay. Next item, establishing the polling place for the November 6th general election. Is there a motion?
I move to establish Merrimack High School as a single polling place for the number of November 6th, 2012 election.
Seconded by Finley. Further discussion?
Would, would Nancy entertain a friendly amendment to include in every two years thereafter?
Well, it won't be November 6th.
Yeah.
But the implication being every two years is, is state, state and federal elections.
We could say November elections.
Or we can just have an agenda item 30 days prior to, and then, and don't forget, because we've had that mistake one time, we have to make sure we do it, but, right. And it's, it's, in my opinion, it's simple enough.
You gotta change it back here, and you gotta change it from there.
Right.
Put around my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
My amendment.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 700. National Guard?
I think my good colleagues lost it mine.
Is anybody keeping track of this?
Oh, yes, I'm sure they are.
Sure they are.
Keep your track of what? Keep your track of what?
Ideas from, ideas from Counselor Dwyer. All right. Item number five, Library Board of Trustees vacancy. Filling the vacancy to Library Trustees for the remainder of Martha Wagner's term, which ends April 2013 pursuant to Charter Article 6 dash 2, RSA 201 dash A colon 10, and RSA This was based on a request I got from the Chairman of the, of the Library Board of Trustees asking for the council to participate in the interviewing of interested parties. This is still the purview of the Board of Trustees to, to make a recommendation to the, to the council for, to fill the vacancy, but Susan asked for the participation of the council, as we did when they filled the vacancy for Bob Kelly. So that's all, that's all this is, at this point, is just a, and, and by the way, who's interested?
Well, that's, well-
Yeah, I won.
Which two?
You're very funny.
Okay. So, okay, so. So. Okay, mention the National Guard again, huh? Big head. So is it, it's the consensus of the council that it would be Tom, Tom and Jackie for this?
That works.
Okay?
May I ask the question?
Yeah.
How would one express interest for this position? Would they send a letter of intent or interest to the board, or how would one do that? If someone asked me, that's all.
Please, Susan, thank you.
I believe the last time, is this on? Okay. I believe the last time the town couns- council handled the acceptance of letters of intent.
Okay, we can do that.
And set up the interviews. There were two trustees and two members of town council who held those interviews, and they were public interviews because we had-
Right.
-applicants sitting in on other applicants' interviews.
Okay.
So this is a nice place to be able to make that public?
Yes.
Yes.
That anyone who's interested-
And that's the other reason that's on, yeah, it's, the other reason it's on the agenda.
Anyone who's interested.
So at, at some point-
Thank you very much.
Eileen, could you put something to have the staff put something together to announce the vacancy and the letters of intent should be sent to Town Hall? Right, and, I don't know, how much, how much time you wanna put on it?
We need to put it on. Yeah.
Right, okay.
Is timing okay?
According to the RSA's and the, the charter information that I looked at, you have two months from the time of acknowledgement. I sent the email on August 25th or something like that.
Well, okay, so we have about-
So we have about a month left.
A month left, fine.
So that fits.
So the gods smile and it works. Okay. All righty. New business. Reappointment of Merrimack Representatives to the National Regional Planning Commission. This is submitted by the Planning Board to reappoint Karen Elmer as one of Merrimack's representatives to the National Regional Planning Commission, as recommended by the Planning Board pursuant to RSA 36 colon 46, Roman numeral 3.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Tom. Koenig, any discussion? Tom?
I just, I, I was at the most recent National Regional Planning Commission, and Karen Elmer was there serving as Vice Chair of the Committee, Committee, and I think she's doing a great job for the town of Merrimack, and so I would wholeheartedly endorse her reappointment.
Okay. Any other, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration of Sergeant Ed Payne Day Declaration. Chief, join us. Police Chief has requested that to publicly declare Saturday, September 29th, 2012 as Ed Payne Day. Sergeant Ed Payne. Sergeant Ed Payne Day, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and this is the Town Council. I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to come before you, to address you regarding our request, and it's actually a request of you as the governing body or the legislative body of the town to proclaim Saturday, the 29th, as Sergeant Ed Payne Day. And one of the reasons why we thought Saturday would be probably the most appropriate day to do this is we are actually coordinating a number of fundraisers that day to help Ed battle debilitating disease that I think most of you are aware of, and that maybe some of the folks out in, in the community are also aware of, that Ed has been dealing with for the better part of a year now. Ed has been suffering with and has been battling ALS, Lou Gehrig's disease, for the better part of the last 15 to 16 months. And we thought, what better way to recognize Ed's commitment, dedication, the level of service, and the 15 years that he's provided in terms of community service to the town of Merrimack? He's a highly decorated police officer, right now currently employed as a patrol sergeant. He was one of our finest bicycle officers and was one of those who started up the unit many, many years ago. He also worked in the leadership capacity not only as a supervisor within the police department, but as a union president. More importantly, as union president, was one of those who spearheaded the food basket drive that I think most of you are familiar with every year for a number of years where the union would provide food baskets to needy families here right in the community of Merrimack. He worked tirelessly for the community over the last 15 years, and in order for us to properly recognize that level of service, we thought, what better way to do it in a forum that Ed would appreciate and that we would find more fitting, or most fitting for him? And we didn't think there would be any better way to do that than at the Fall Expo, when we're doing a number of these events to help out Ed with his fight against ALS, and do it in concert with Dave McCray, one of our former selectmen, and all the work that he's put into the Fall Expo. It brings the community together, it brings us there, and provides us an arena and a forum to recognize Ed in, I think, the most appropriate way. And that's why I'm asking you folks, as members of the Town Council, to try to get your arms around all that Ed has been trying to battle over these last 15 to 16 months. And sign the proclamation and be there on Saturday, if you can, to proclaim with Ed, he will be there Saturday morning as well, that the 29th is Ed Payne Day.
Okay, thank you. The proclamation, whereas Merrimack recognizes the service and dedication of Police Sergeant Ed Payne, and whereas Sergeant Payne is a longtime Merrimack resident and Merrimack High School alum, alumnus, and whereas Sergeant Payne has been a Merrimack police officer since 1993, and a full-time officer since 1996, and whereas Sergeant Payne has selflessly served the citizens of Merrimack and put their well-being and safety ahead of his own, and whereas we all owe a tremendous debt to Sergeant Payne for the betterment he has given to the, to Merrimack as both a police officer and a citizen, and whereas we pay special tribute to Sergeant Payne and his fellow police officers who serve the people of Merrimack and who respond with courage when called upon to provide service, and whereas police officers throughout New England and citizens of Merrimack and other communities have joined together to support Sergeant Payne and his family as they undergo major challenges. Now therefore, we, the Merrimack Town Council, though the state of New Hampshire dare, do hereby proclaim September 29th, 2012 as Sergeant Ed Payne Day in Merrimack, New Hampshire, and ask all citizens to participate in the many activities planned for observing this day to honor Sergeant Payne, hereby proclaimed by the Merrimack Town Council, and sign this 27th day of September 2012. And I presume-
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
On behalf of the members of the Merrimack Police Department, we're grateful for your support, and I know I speak for Ed, and I hope you'll have a chance to see him on Saturday. He's eternally grateful for all that you have done, the town manager has done, and the folks of Merrimack have been doing for him in support of what he's been trying to do over the last 16 months. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item, acceptance of donations for the, for the Merrimack Police Department. Town Council considered the acceptance of the following donations, $1,050 from anonymous donors, $250 from Dr. Jill Patronaggio, Patronaggio, and $1,063 from Merrimack Crime Line, which are the proceeds from the Magic Show to be used for police equipment and maintenance of K-9 Gunny pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article 8 dash 15. Lieutenant, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'll make this very brief, we have five separate donations that we've received over the course of the last few months from citizens in Merrimack and Merrimack Crime Line. As you know, Merrimack Crime Line has been extremely generous and has been a, a force in raising money for K-9 Gunny, who is completely funded by donations. Two of, I'm sorry, one of the donations for the $1,063 is from Crime Line, from the Magic Show, that all the proceeds go to Gunny for his training and his maintenance. The other four donations, another one, $500 for Gunny, another $500 donation for equipment for the police department, a $50 donation, and the $250 for, again, K-9 Gunny. Would trade places with him, he does very well, but we do appreciate, we do appreciate the community and, and how much support that he does have.
Okay. Questions or comments from the council? None. Is there a motion? Finley? I didn't know whether he was raising his hand, or pointing, yeah.
I move that the council accepts the following donations, $1,050 from an anonymous donor, $250 from Dr. Jill Patronaggio-
Patronaggio.
Health fee. $1,063 from Merrimack Crime Line, which proceeds from the Magic Show to be used for police equipment and maintenance of K-9 Gunny pursuant to RSA 31, colon 95B and Charter Article 8 dash 15.
Seconded by Counselor Dwyer. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries 700, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Next, please.
Next, please.
David, your turn. 2012 Fall Festival Business Expo.
Oh, there you go. I'd like to thank you all for letting me appear before you. If you hadn't, I wouldn't forever be able to say that I was there the night I heard a town councilor say that a push came to shove, they would prepare the commandeer of school, the whole election. If that's not democracy in the great land of America that we live in. With that being said, I will really try and push this through. Okay, um, the reason I'm here again tonight is, is really to try and just recognize some of the concerns that I mentioned before- that I mentioned before, that we don't run this as necessarily a traditional committee, and it's more or less me and my merry band of friends, and I wanted to just again make sure that the Town Council is aware as we do this, since ultimately you're in charge. So we're two days away. Approximately 95 organizations have signed up, and about 95% are from Maramac. Last year, we had 142, and about 80% were from there. This isn't that the, it isn't that the festival is necessarily getting any less popular, it's that a decision was made after last year's major rainout that I was no longer going to actively go out. Last year, I physically went to every storefront in Amherst Bedford and Ashwell recruiting, and I came to the realization that 100 is a nice number, and if it rains like heck, we can fit them all in the two gyms in the hallway as opposed to what went on last year, which there were people in rooms that people didn't even know was there, so. So again, like I say, 100 is the number. With 100, we raised $4,000, which I think is adequate to put it on. Last year, we raised $7,000, and we spent $3,000 in advertising that I would have been better off giving to a charity. But you live and you learn. So anyway, so that's the reasoning. I think 100 is a good number. We'll be setting up Friday night and Saturday morning as usual. The 4,000, I would say about $3,600 is spent so far. It's gone the traditional route, bands, DJ, the school, which continues to be our biggest cost, the petting farm, Wally the Green Monster, some T-shirts, and we didn't buy any new signs this year, as you may have seen, this will probably be the last year for those signs. They've definitely seen better days, but they're out there doing the trick. This year, as Chief Doyle said, they'll be doing Sergeant Payne Day as part of the festival. We're very honored that they are using that venue to honor one of their own, and we think it'll be a good way for people to pay tribute to Sergeant Payne. The weather, knock on wood, has been looking a lot better the last 24 hours. About 48 hours ago, I thought I was living Groundhog Day again. There was a starved front, and it was looking like it was going to be nasty, and instead it's kind of sped up, and it looks like we're going to get almost all of it tomorrow. Maybe a little cloudy, we may get a shower that blows in, but overall, they're saying we should be in good shape. The car show has been canceled. We never were able to really get someone to completely commit to it, instead of doing another, doing it where we weren't proud of it, we decided just to not do it. And I don't think in the future you'll ever see me bring it forward. It's kind of been a failure every year. I mean, two of the years, you can't really blame anyone, it was the weather, but even the year we did it, it really wasn't that big, so. We're going to stick with what works. Parking will be at Lady Mercy, Town Hall, the Courthouse, and the American Legion. And real quick, as you can see, I think we, again, did pretty good with our entertainment. We really do try and believe, try and be in an event where anyone, young or old, can come and see something that interests them. We got karaoke with Bernie D., a couple of dance demonstrations. The Police Department, always a favorite, was the Taser and some of their stuff. The Fire Department may not be able to do the, the chief told me they wouldn't be able to do most of the stuff they do because of restrictions on their overtime, so they weren't going to be able to man it. McGonagall's Petting Farm will be there. The Anheuser-Busch will be bringing at least one Clyde's deal. Again, I spoke the last couple of days with Chairman Mahon, and based on you guys agreeing with the proclamation, Chairman Mahon has agreed he is going to read it and do it as part of the opening ceremonies at 10:45. Then we got a folk rock band, and 60s, 70s bands, the first Robatical team will be there. Wally the Green Monster will be there for a couple of hours. We have a wiffle ball tournament and a three-on-three basketball tournament, both in honor of Sergeant Payne, and Gunny will be doing a police K-9 demonstration. Bottom line, everything's looking good, as you're all aware, 80% of it's the weather, and it looks like we're going to skate through, and I really believe the whole addition to Sergeant Payne honoring him, I think is really going to bring something special to it this year. So, don't know if there's any questions still. Do you have anything to add?
Questions, comments?
I change my mind. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I do, I want to add that Dave just works an unbelievable amount of hours, and when you compound six years, it's really quite amazing.
Well, the reason I do so much myself is I've run out of people that are willing to actually work with me.
There's Kendra. We see him with the National Guard, and now this, in one night!
Thank you, Phil. Again, it's a team effort, and also the Linda and Susan from Economic Development Committee, they, the whole job is setting it up at night, it really is. Once you set it up, everyone just shows up and has fun. And Susan and Linda both come in the night before and set up all 100 exhibits, so.
Linda Benetti, I was going to say the last name.
Yeah, Linda Benetti.
Thank you.
Well, we know, we know Dave knocks himself out for this. It shows it's very well organized. Love the logo, by the way. That's really cool.
That's very nice.
And, you know, this is something that got off to a sort of interesting start six years ago.
Well, you said it, you know, you said it last year, and you were so right, and you said, "We just took a flyer on it six years ago, and who knew that it would be anything?" In fact, I remember the Maramac Forum, if you go on it, you'll see it was filled with people saying, "Oh, this will never work, this will never last, they don't have enough time to do it." And six years later, here we are.
Yeah, that's tremendous opportunity for the community to get together and just have some fun.
Oh, yeah.
So, and to show what they can do, and what they're up to.
Finley, I just want to, Dave said it's the night of setups that's the most work, but it is hard to believe that that's accurate, because you, of all the different, you know, items you have going on here, it's obviously a ton of work.
It's a ton.
I just married off my oldest daughter, and I watched my wife do a ton of work. I avoided it. I avoided it, but it's a-
And the biggest, oh, if it was an outdoor wedding, Finley, I was going to say, I bet the biggest thing she was worried about was the weather.
It wasn't, so, but you're right, it would have been a major thing. So, thank you.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the kind words, but I don't want to tie you guys up. I know you get a lot of real business to do, who knows what we're going to come there next. Anything else?
I was just going to say-
No, David, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great work.
Hope to see, I know we'll see the chairman there, and hopefully Mr. Dwyer, and hopefully we'll see a lot more of you guys there.
Hopefully, yeah.
Thank you very much. No, I said we would see you, hopefully we'll see the rest.
Thank you again.
Right. Good night, David. Good night, Tom. What brought all this on? Okay. Naming of the proposed Watson Park Pavilion. Town Council discuss and consider the Rotary Club of Maramac's request to formally name the proposed pavilion to be located at Watson Park, the Roger Duhamel Pavilion. Peter, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Peter Flood from Sixshore Drive, and a member of the Maramac Rotary Club, and spearheading the pavilion, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have concerning the naming of the pavilion as the Roger Duhamel Pavilion.
Just my only comment is I'm happy that we're naming somebody from the community and somebody who, based on the narrative that you provided, Peter, seemed to be somebody that was what I would probably describe as a leader, but not an out-front kind of leader, just somebody who was there behind the scenes doing a lot of different things with a lot of different activities and led in himself to some good causes, and I know he was active in the Rotary, and I just, I think it's since Rotary's taken the lead on this, I think it's appropriate that Rotarian be named, so I was really excited and pleased for the Duhamel family for this honor, so I think-
Thank you, Bill.
It should be, it's good.
Tom?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I really appreciate and support it. I guess, since you included in the packet our recently adopted naming policy, I guess I have to ask, did we in fact follow this policy in any way, shape, or form to come to this conclusion? And if so, what public hearings or what discussion came up to do that, since it says quite clearly that we shall do that?
In our several meetings with the council concerning the pavilion, the name of Roger Duhamel or in the memory of Roger Duhamel has been cited in the minutes several times.
Check.
I think what Tom meant was there were different criteria to be considered in a Under one scenario, the Town Council may authorize the Parks and Recreation Committee to take public input and make a recommendation. That implies multiple suggestions for names, as we're going through with this room and the one over in the, what we call the Selectmen's, one of the names of the Selectmen's meeting room. There is a, an exception of, the donor stipulates naming of the facility as a condition of the donation, and Rotary is donating the monies for this pavilion and have naming rights, so to speak. Taking it out of the Parks and Recreation hands and putting it directly into the Town Council.
And right from the first monies that we collected were from donations given after Roger's funeral, and the family had asked to have those donations given to the Rotary Club, and we determined that we would like to do a project in memory of Roger, and we chose the pavilion as the prop venue.
And I hope you're not getting me wrong, if I might, I'm not suggesting that's not the right thing to do, and I'm not suggesting we haven't been talking about it. I just, because we have a document, I can imagine somebody six months from now is going to come to me and say, "How come you guys didn't follow this document?" And so as Jackie pointed out, I wanted to make sure we did follow the document as best we could. The first section says, Section B gives us the opportunity to have the donors proffer a name, and you've done that, and you've done that several times at various meetings. Section C, the following procedures shall be followed for naming, renaming of town parks and other town facilities. We have to come up with some criteria in there that we're using to make this judgment, and I incorrectly read the first one to say that the Parks and Rec Committee should take public input, but it says only that the Town Council may authorize them, and I appreciate your pointing that out to me. So the Town Council still does responsibility. The park and facility naming opportunity request form shall have been completed and submitted to the Town Council, and so I might recommend that we do that, maybe in arrears if it hasn't been done already, so that we have a documented form, piece of paper that says what name we're asking to apply here.
I thought that had been done in your package.
Well, it's not, I don't have it in my package, so I-
Correct.
Okay. Then great. That's been done as well. So then following a review and recommendations, suggestions, and public comments, the Town Council shall determine the name, and I think that's what we're looking at doing tonight. And so I think we have in fact followed the policy and the procedure, and we're covered in case anybody is questioning or concerned that we didn't even follow our own procedure. Thank you.
Jackie?
I'm very grateful for Tom to point all that out. I think it's very useful and a new, kind of a new policy to go through the rigors of it.
Other comments, discussions, questions? What's the pleasure of the council and the request?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town of Maramac, correction, the Town Council, formally name the proposed pavilion located at Watson Park to be similarly named the Roger Duhamel Pavilion.
Seconded by Counselor Harrington. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Finley abstains, I'm sorry, six. Motion passes six zero one. Thank you.
I would only like to add that as a former Ranger Airborne Lieutenant, I would be proud to be recruited if the need arose to lead one of the companies of the Dwyer Commandeers.
Phil's got to be next.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
No, no, I was, I was an EM, I'm not going to go volunteer for that.
You volunteered for enough.
Yeah, I know.
In your day.
Okay. September 13, Town Council Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Town Council meetings of September 13, 2012, be approved as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Rothaus. Are there any changes, amendments? Tom?
Yeah, on page, I wasn't here that night, but on page six of 11-
You were?
I was not here that night.
I was going to say, it was noted that you were here on?
No.
Never mind. Never mind.
I'm just noting, above item number two, the consideration of acceptance of the pavilion, it says that the oath of officer was administered to Simon Thompson by Chairman Rothaus, and it was probably the oath of office, not officer, and it was probably the Vice Chairman acting in the position of Chairman.
I like the proclamation. If you ever hear anything back.
But I wasn't there, so I can only surmise.
Your assumption would be correct.
Any other changes? Since that was only page six of 11. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions.
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries five zero two. Since I left early that evening. Comments from the press?
She's a great chair.
Comments from the public? And may I ask your name?
Yvette Cowan.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to comments from councilors?
Uh, well, since there's no comments on the press and there's no comments from the public, yes.
You just pointed out an individual that is in the public, and I know we're overstepping our bounds a little bit, but since I was on the search committee for the new library director, I wanted to introduce to you, since she is here, Yvette Kuser, who was chosen by the Library Trustees and ourselves as the successor library director, so you know who the person in the face is. I'm sure that there's a formal announcement coming out from the Library Trustees, but I thought it was important, since she's sat through the entire meeting and we acknowledge her. So, she might not, but I just wanted to briefly read from one of her applications. She was an excellent candidate, and I think will serve the town of Maramac extremely well. But she wrote, "I believe good libraries are central to the well-being of a community. I'm committed to professional development, team building, and community outreach, and I hope that my work in drafting the strategic plan for Maramac shows my commitment to implementing a new vision for the library." And I think she's an excellent choice and will do extremely well for the town of Maramac. Thank you, Yvette.
Terrific. Thank you.
Congratulations. You're welcome. And that was all I wanted to add.
Just to echo along Counselor Koenig's lines, Mrs. Wyman over at the Master Cola Elementary School, her son is my boss, and she had, she had nothing but wonderful things to say about you and how you synergize with the, with the local, with the local elementary schools in town, so I'm, I'm very grateful that you, that you're going to be coming on to the library, and I wish you, wish you nothing but success as you move forward. May I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Why not?
Thank you. Appreciate it. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to participate in Erica's Run. We had over 400 runners, runners and walkers in attendance. They raced over $10,000 for assisting families that are dealing, that are grief-stricken with a loved one with, with cancer. I want to publicly acknowledge Counselor Flood with her kind donation. She got a T-shirt out of the deal. And I certainly want to acknowledge Counselor Koenig and his family participated. It was good to see, see Tom and his family out, having a good time, meeting people. School Committee Member Buckley was in attendance, Plinywood Member Best, his wife Kate is active with the, with Erica's Run, she's been involved- She's been involved with it now since its inception. And I want to thank Janine Nodder as well for participating. It was a great day, the weather cooperated, and it was a tremendous amount of fun. So I'm very happy that the community came out to support such a good cause. Along those lines, on October 6, the Merrimack firefighters are going to be having their own 5K at 9:30. Proceeds are going to benefit the Professional Firefighters Fund towards community programs. It's going to be right over here at the, at Merrimack's Magic Mile, and I am certainly going to be there in attendance, and I look forward to seeing other people there. And then on October 14, which is a Sunday, Michael Lavermy, the family of Michael Lavermy, as many of you may remember, he was unfortunately tragically killed in an auto accident several months ago. And his family have started the Michael Lavermy Memorial Foundation to raise money, to provide funding to specific causes that were loyal to Michael. Michael was very active with computers and programming and IT stuff, and the hope is that they might be able to raise, raise funds to provide scholarships to kids that will be pursuing academic, you know, professional careers either in the computer or engineering arts. So that race is at 1:00 PM. The website is ml-mf.org. I certainly will also be there as well. I think it's, again, both events, I think, are a great opportunity to get out, celebrate the community of Merrimack, get a chance to meet people, get some exercise in, and commiserate over, over the day's events, over a good cheer afterwards. So I certainly would encourage my colleagues, and I certainly would like to encourage the community at large to get off the couch and get out there. So, and that's all I have to say. And thank you very much.
Anyone else on the council? Paul, you said you needed some time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hate to bring this up, but November's right around the corner, and with the Thanksgiving holiday falling on the second Thursday of the month, which is a normal meeting day.
Second Thursday?
Fourth Thursday, what the, fourth Thursday.
He's Canadian.
Yeah, I'm Canadian. I'm thinking it's October. We need to think about our November schedule, whether we want two meetings in November or just one. It will be pretty much back-to-back, because we have a meeting on October 25. The next meeting would be November 1, and then the following meeting would be November 15. Pretty tight with the 25th of October and November 1 meeting. If the council so wanted to, they either have the two meetings or have just the one, maybe on the 15th of November. Also, they would need to think about the December calendar. Same situation where the second meeting in December would fall on Christmas week, and normally, we, you take that little recess off before we start the budget on January 3 of 2013. So depending on what you might want to do in December 2, it could be December 6 and December 20, if you wanted to take those, that week off between Christmas and New Year's. Just some food for thought that's going to have to come up and talk about for upcoming schedule. And then, of course, we are on the, in January, we start the budget process one more time.
We typically do the first and third Thursdays in November and December.
And that would be November 1.
And November 1, and we'll just have to see what the level of business is that develops between now and then to determine whether or not we'll go forward on the first. Because we've done that before, where, you know, we've had fairly close together, and there just wasn't anything going on, so we just canceled a meeting. But in case things move along, if that's agreeable with the council, we'll just, we'll just schedule it that way.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And see how that works.
Absolutely. Okay, so then, and then we'll bring those through on the announcements and on the website. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments from the council? Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chairman.
Six to one. We're adjourned, thank you.